Consent agenda and placed on to the regular agenda. And if it's placed on the regular agenda, it will be in its regular space on the regular agenda. Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Item four A, absence excused, Councilmember Garcia. Four B, approval of minutes, August nineteenth, regular meeting, and August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty study session. Item four C, oath of office. Item four D, elections, temporary polling change, Maplewood Reform Church to Holland Civic Center.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, are there any council members who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt agenda as presented.
Moved by Trethuie, is there support?
Support.
Support by Bird, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Bird?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Trethuie?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is public comment. Every meeting of the Holland City Council, and actually all of our boards and commissions, have a period for public comment under the Open Meetings Act. We restrict public comment to one opportunity per person, and we do that, limit it also to five minutes. You'll notice that there are three lights on the dais. In front of me, there's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means your time has expired, and we're very strict about that. So we'd appreciate it that you would stop when the five minutes is up. You may speak on any subject, but please remember that this is one-way communication. Council does not respond at this point. This is your opportunity to speak to council. We also firmly believe in this council in civil discourse. We are civil in our conversations with one another, we are civil in our discourse with you, and we expect that from the members of the audience as well. Having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council this evening? And please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Gemma, last name Law, and I live in Grand Rapids. And I'm going to translate what you just said so the audience can understand in Spanish.
Certainly.
So, el alcalde dijo que este es el tiempo de hablar con el concilio, y que tenemos cinco minutos, que hay unas luces, las verdes, la amarilla, y la roja, que son cinco minutos por persona, y que va, todo mundo que quiere hablar tiene cinco minutos para hablar, y que es un lugar de respeto, entonces que hablamos con respeto. Thank you. So, they would like to, that's a file, talk to the council, and if that's okay with you, I'll be here to translate.
That's perfectly fine. It still stays within the five-minute period. I did want to let you know, because you were here two weeks ago, and we don't typically respond to members, but I did want to let you know, this council does not do resolutions on anything that is outside of our operational jurisdiction. So while you are welcome to speak and address council at any time, but please know that we, as a council, do not do the type of resolution that you were talking about two weeks ago.
So I'm going to translate.
Certainly.
So, el alcalde dice que este, que aquí estuvimos hace dos semanas, y dice que típicamente este concilio no hace nada que no esté adentro de su jurisdicción, ¿verdad? Entonces, que típicamente no responden a lo que decimos, pero en este momento nos está respondiendo. Pero que tenemos también la opción de hablar con ellos.
Okay. And just so I make sure that I didn't take any of your five minutes, I'm just going to ask to make sure that City Manager Van Beek resets the five-minute clock starting right now.
I appreciate it.
Certainly.
So, él me puso el tiempo otra vez para que empiece mis cinco minutos. So, we are Movimiento Cosecha, we're a nonviolent immigrant movement, they are seeking to win permanent protection, dignity, and respect for all immigrants in the United States, including undocumented. And we're here with our fellow members of the group from Movimiento Cosecha Holland. They are going to speak in regards to driver's licenses for all. So, I'll step aside so they can speak. Mi nombre es Gemma, yo vengo de Grand Rapids, pero aquí estamos todos los demás de nosotros de Movimiento Cosecha Holland, que vamos a hablar acerca de licencias para todos. Thank you.
Certainly. And it'll be five-minute limit for each person that speaks?
Son cinco minutos por persona para hablar.
And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Martin Medina, uno veintiocho West Thirty-First Street, Holland, Michigan.
One hundred and twenty-eight West...
Well, Thirty-First Street.
Thirty-first Street, Holland, Michigan.
Pues el día de hoy estoy aquí porque yo pienso que es algo que necesitamos, y usted como señor, usted que es el mayor de esta ciudad, debería de tomar en considerancia de que nos apoye a una resolución, porque muchas personas que trabajan en el campo, en los restaurantes, en todas partes, necesitamos una licencia para llegar a los trabajos, para llevar a los niños a la escuela, y no estamos pidiendo la licencia a usted, sino que pase una resolución. Como dijo usted una vez, dijo que todo Holland, éramos una solo Holland, y eso nos aparta de usted.
I'm here this evening because I believe the driver's license is important for everyone. We're here to work, to take our kids to school, and to be part of the community. The mayor said one time that it's only one Holland, but if we don't have driver's license, that sets us apart from everyone in Holland.
Thank you, Martin.
Estamos aquí nuevamente causando quizás molestias, pero con la seguridad de que es un acto de fe, de que ustedes pueden hacer algo. Sabemos que no tienen la facultad de dar una licencia de conducir, pero sabemos también que están en este poder sirviendo al pueblo. Y el pueblo de Holland necesita de una licencia de conducir, porque estamos aquí y somos trabajadores esenciales. Necesitamos una licencia por dignidad y respeto, para que podamos salir a la calle como cualquiera de ustedes, personas honradas, cien por ciento trabajadoras. No somos delincuentes, no somos violadores, somos personas que estamos aquí y venimos aquí con el firme propósito de sacar a nuestra familia adelante. Por qué estamos aquí? Por la necesidad que hay en nuestros pueblos, por la pobreza en que nos tienen nuestros gobernantes. Ustedes son gobernantes y gobiernan para el pueblo, y nosotros somos el pueblo. Queremos pedirles que intercedan por nosotros ante la gobernadora, para que nuevamente se nos devuelva la licencia de conducir, muy esencial también para nosotros. Como nosotros somos trabajadores esenciales, la licencia también es esencial para nosotros. Quiero pedir una disculpa y ofrecer mis respetos, porque también sabemos respetar, pero sabemos también que ustedes nos van a escuchar y van a llevar nuestras necesidades a donde sea necesario para que seamos escuchados. No pedimos nada, sabemos trabajar, tenemos estas manos para trabajar, pero necesitamos una licencia para conducir sin miedo, por nuestra familia y por nuestros hijos. Gracias, porque sé que nuestra opinión va a ser tomada en cuenta, y saldremos de aquí con la confianza de que moveremos su corazón, y hablarán por nosotros e intervendrán en favor de una resolución satisfactoria a nuestras necesidades. Gracias.
Thank you. And I was speaking right at the beginning, I think I missed your name and address.
What's his name and his direction?
Mi nombre es Sylvia Ortiz, y vivo en la calle doce, en el número...
What number is that, Gina? Uno veintiocho.
Uno veintiocho, perdón.
She's very nervous, yeah, nervous. I am too. So I'm going to try to summarize her. Her name is Sylvia. She lives in one twenty-eight twelfth street, I believe that's what she said. So I'm going to try to summarize everything. She says that she understands that the city of Holland doesn't give driver's license, but she says that she is here in faith that you will listen to the, to what we're asking about a resolution or a form of support for driver's licenses for all, so it can be put on in lensing. She understands that it may cause you, like, discomfort to see us all in here, but it's a necessity, because we need dignity and respect, because we are workers that come here, they... She says we're not asking for a handout, we're here, we have our hands and our labor that, you know, is in Holland, that helps Holland move forward, and she believes and in confidence that you guys will listen to support what we're saying, so that lensing can listen to each local city. They're saying that immigrants are welcome, and in the city, the labor, and everything that we bring to the community. So it says summarize of what she said.
Good job summarizing, thank you, and thank you Sylvia, I appreciate it. Anyone else here who would like to address council? Oh, yeah, and our city manager is going to clean the podium in between.
I think I missed one.
We may have missed one, we apologize for that. And do please come forward, and then please state your name and address for the record.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Agustina Francisco, vivo en Holland, en el número setenta y cuatro de la diecisiete East...
Agustina Francisco, seventy-four? Seventy-four.
De la diecisiete.
Seventeenth Street, Holland, Michigan.
La razón por la que todos estamos aquí es por la misma razón, de pedir una licencia para poder conducir un carro, poder tener a seguridad, poder llevar a nuestros niños a la escuela. Yo tengo niños chiquitos, que todos los días salgo con temor a trabajar, no sé si voy a regresar o no. Mis niños se quedan con temor, si la voy a volver a ver o no. Si tenemos un accidente y no traemos a seguridad, nos metemos en un gran problema, y no podemos resolverle a la otra persona si le causamos el accidente. Lo único que queremos es tener algo seguro, como para nosotros, como para ustedes también. No causar ningún, no queremos causar ningún problema a nadie. Entonces, lo único que estamos pidiendo, que si nos pueden ayudar a conseguir una licencia, pagamos tasas, pagamos por todo lo que nos dan aquí. Tenemos, pues, todo para trabajo. Si tenemos trabajo, podemos nosotros pagar nuestra seguridad, nuestro carro, todo. Y podemos llevar seguros a nuestros niños a la escuela. A veces los niños nos dicen que los llevemos de vacaciones por temor, no los podemos llevar a ningún lado, porque, por el temor de que si nos llega a parar la policía. Entonces, por favor, si nos escuchan y nos pudieran ayudar a conseguir las licencias, ojalá Dios toque sus corazones para que nos puedan ayudar. Gracias.
Thank you.
Summarizing again. So, it might be good if there would be some type of translation, you know, at the same time. She says that she drives to work every day, and she has little kids, and with fear, she drives with fear that she might not come back and see her kids. And her kids also have the fear, that when she goes out and drives with fear, that she wants to see the little kids again, see her again. So, she says that we're honest, she says that we also want to be able to work and purchase insurance and have driver's license, because it's good for everyone, not just the driver, but everyone else that drives in the city, right? So, the purchase of insurance, she says that we don't want to cause any harm or any trouble, but if we both have insurance, because we have driver's license, it's good for everyone. So, that's the point that she believes that in God, that would move your hearts, so that you would extend this resolution to advocate for driver's license for all in the state of Michigan.
And would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Fidella, and I live in twelve forty-two Central Avenue in Holland.
Oh, twelve forty-two, she said, twelve forty-two.
Twelve forty-two, oh, sorry.
Good, good. Very well, very well.
Okay, la razón que estamos aquí, como todos ustedes ya saben...
You want to come a little closer to the microphone, thank you.
La razón que estamos aquí es, que ustedes ya la saben, es para pedir una resolución. Yo sé que ustedes pueden ayudarnos a poner toda una resolución, y también quiero, casi como quien dice, continuar con lo que dijo la otra muchacha. Una persona conocida, no ocasionó el accidente, le pegaron a él, y por no tener una licencia, él estuvo en problemas. Entonces, nosotros necesitamos una licencia para que no vuelva a pasar una cosa así. Si él va manejando bien, la otra persona es la que viene borracha, manejando, haciendo un zigzag, y le pega a una persona que no tiene licencia, va manejando bien, y es la que se queda en problemas. Entonces, es esencial, esencial que es para nosotros una licencia, y su apoyo más que nada, es lo único que le pedimos, su apoyo para agarrar una licencia. Gracias.
Thank you.
So she want to piggyback off what the last person talked about. She knows of someone, somebody else ran into him, and because he didn't have insurance, then he was in trouble. So the license will allow all drivers to have insurance, and she says that we're working this essential works, and we, you know, well, always been essential for the labor in the community. And she wants to, for the council to have a resolution in favor of driver's license for all, so that can be noticed in Michigan, that Holland, that the city of Holland supports driver's licenses for all.
Thank you, and thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Oh, yeah. Okay. The president of the city in Michigan? Okay.
And would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Ruby, and I live with my mom on, in seventy-four Seventeenth Street, Holland, Michigan.
Go ahead.
It scares me to know that my mom is scared to drive me somewhere, and I just want to make sure we're safe, and I don't want to see my parents get taken away from me. So every day I wake up, I'm always scared that they might take my parents away, or something. And I always ask, why can't we go on vacations? And they just answer that they can't go because they don't have a license, and it stops us from being like a normal family and being together.
Thank you, Ruby.
Am I translated? Ella dice que está muy, muy, con mucho miedo de que su mamá no llegue a su casa, como su mamá lo había dicho antes, y ella dice que quiere salir a vacaciones, y no, y le dicen, pues no puedo salir a vacaciones porque no tenemos licencia. Entonces ella tiene mucho miedo de que se separen de su mamá y de su familia, como lo había dicho, y como ustedes lo vieron, pues está con mucho sentimiento y llorando.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time?
My name is Abraham Gonzalez, I know some of you guys. I live eight forty-nine Knoll Crest Avenue, Holland, Michigan. I just want to start by saying your guys' strength and courage is really inspiring to me personally.
And Abe, Abe, you're going to want to address us and make sure that you're talking into the mic, otherwise people at home can't hear you.
Perfect. I just wanted to state that their strength and courage is inspiring to me, and thank you for taking the time to listen to us speak. I work primarily in the court system, I'm a criminal defense attorney. I serve the citizens of Holland and Ottawa County on a daily basis. I see how much these types of crime clog up our system, waste our resources. I see the fear in people's eyes when they come to the court system, who are just trying to go to work, just trying to support their families, take their kids to school, and fear that they're not going to walk out of the courtroom. I see frustration in our judges, I see backlogs in our systems to these types of cases, and I don't think it serves any type of legitimate purpose when we're talking about these specific types of license issues. There are different types of suspensions that are valid, these are not them. I think it's a waste of our resources, and, you know, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Abe. And is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Nathan Myatt, I'm a Hope College student, so I live on campus. Does that require me to state an address?
If you would, we'd appreciate it.
I live on the corner of Lincoln and Fifteenth. I'm coming here today as a student, wondering if there's any public projects that you have entry or research projects that you have for me or my colleagues.
My recommendation is, is that you contact the city manager outside of the meeting, and they would be able to help you out with that.
Okay.
All right? Thank you. And he'll give you his card here too, Nathan. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Mika Weiss, my address is sixty East Twenty-first Street. I'm the board president of Petal Holland, so I'm here for a little bit different topic tonight, although it is interesting to me, as, you know, I'm standing here talking about transportation in the city, it is striking how much we have built our city, our country, around being able to get around by an automobile, and how many people are left out of that system. And a lot of times, that's pretty invisible to us, but I think we can see tonight how really important it is for people to have a lot of choices when it comes to safe mobility. So, I wanted to thank you for allowing the Tent Street demo cycle track to go forward. I think that they had to have some approval by you, and just really appreciate your willingness to give something like that a try. It was enjoyable, it was a lot of fun, it was really cool to see what happened, and as someone who is sitting out doing some bike counts out there, I had the opportunity to just watch people go past, and I don't have to tell you how difficult things have been for the last several months for a lot of people. What I saw on that cycle track was just joy, it was a lot of fun, in addition to all the really important transportation purposes that it meant. So, and I wanted to let you know as well, as somebody who spends a lot of time looking at this sort of thing, that it was really, really well done, just down to every detail, it was well designed, and it was well executed, and we appreciate that too. So, I want to tell you about a couple of the things that we saw when we were looking at it. So, the city did counts of bikes, and we helped provide some of those volunteers. When we do counts as Petal Holland, we count a few different things. In addition to counting volumes, we also count gender split, and we pay attention to where people are riding. So typically, we'll look at if people are on the street or on the sidewalk. In this case, we looked at street, sidewalk, and also the cycle track. And the reason we count those things, so for gender, on a population basis, women tend to be a little bit more risk averse, they also do more trip chaining, so rather than going point A to point B, like work to home, again, population basis, it tends to be more like work, grocery store, daycare, home. So they have more complex trips. So that just means that travel patterns are a little bit different. You can tell a little bit about the effectiveness, the efficiency of your system, if you look at some of those gender splits. And then the other thing that we look at is where people are riding, and that tells us some similar things. How comfortable are people, and where are they? So in places that have really invested in bike transportation, you tend to see about fifty-fifty gender splits. So, when we counted for this project, we also counted, we counted Tent Street last year as well, we didn't really see a shift in the gender counts from last year to this year, and that actually surprised me a little bit. But we've got about sixty-two percent male and about thirty-eight percent female ridership, at least in that corridor of the city of Holland. What was really interesting though, is the shift in where people were riding. So this is one of the, one of the places where we get a lot of pushback. So people who are walking around hate it when somebody on a bike comes past them. People who are on the street like to yell out the window to get on the sidewalk, so it's a little bit of a no-win situation if you're on a bike. So last year, during our count, we saw thirty-five percent of our riders on Tent Street were in the street, and sixty-five percent were on the sidewalk. So this year, only five percent were in the street, twelve percent were on the sidewalk, and eighty-three percent were in the cycle track. So for us, that is just resounding success, people are comfortable with this facility. It's a complicated project, there are a lot of other things to take into consideration, but as far as the comfort and usability of the facility goes, we were really, really pleased. So, thank you, thanks for letting it go forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mika. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public, oh, come on up. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Anne Henriksen, three three eight Royal Park Drive, Zeeland, Michigan. I'm here and probably will be here again and again and again, because I'm on a mission, so to speak. And thank you so much for allowing me to be here and speak to this. I am going back to the ordinance, and I will be speaking to the ordinance again and again and again. I think we have a year and a half before elections for you folks, so that's kind of my mission, is that the public was not informed about this ordinance, and this ordinance is a state ordinance, it's not a Holland ordinance. So as I'm traveling the city and talking to people engagement, as you have talked about one-on-one, it'll take me a lot of time to do this, but I believe it's important that Holland knows what they've got and what they'll be held responsible for, unless you have a form or something that you're going to do to inform them, and then what the legality is. This ordinance is punitive, so we're not talking about the reason for the ordinance, which is a whole list of people who need to be protected from discrimination, but truthfully, it was an LGBT. ordinance. It was ten years ago that this was proposed. The people that proposed it was LGBT. And whether the others are included or not, they're included in the Elliot Larson as well as the LGBT. So I wanna start with seventy-one pastors that were approved of it. And so many of them came in and I'm thankful for them. Reverend Burkhoff, um, Reverend Bart Lemay from, um, Methodist Church, and Reverend Wiersma, and then Jay Peters also says this scripture, "Love your neighbor as yourself." But did they read the whole thing? It says this, "You have heard it said to love your neighbor and hate your enemy. But I tell you, love your enemies and pray for those who persecute you so that you may be sons of your father in heaven. For he causes the sun to rise on the evil and on the good and sends rain on the righteous and the unrighteous. For if you love those who love you, what reward will you have? Don't even the tax collectors do the same? And if you greet only your brothers, what are you doing out of the ordinary? Don't even the Gentiles do the same? Be perfect, therefore, as your heavenly father is perfect." So that applies to the clergy. I'm wondering, seventy-one agreed with it? I'm wondering, what is the grand number that don't agree with it because it's against scripture? So that is one of the places I'm going to tap with this ordinance. They'll have it in their hand and they'll also have William Wagner's commentary on it. So, um, so that they are informed and they can understand it. Okay. What is Holland saying behind the city council's backs? I've been on Eighth Street and I've been on the, in the market and have given the ordinance there. Some of the comments are very interesting. First of all, some say, wait a minute, I don't really wanna be, I don't want my name on anything because I don't, I wanna protect my business. This ordinance doesn't, causes fear in people because it's punitive. I have gone about collecting, um, signatures. I didn't do it actually. It was a little Hispanic church. They did three hundred and four signatures. I'm not gonna give these to you and I'll tell you why. You'll have to take my word for it. Because they are afraid that their names are on a piece of paper. They're afraid of what will happen to them, what will be the repercussions from that. But they do have the ordinance in their hand. One shopkeeper, she said this to me, "If a man comes in here, it's woman's clothing. If a man comes in here and asks me to go into the, um, fitting room to zip him up, I will not go. I won't do that." Whoa, that's discrimination. Honey, watch out, be careful. Another one said, um, a very high-class store in Holland, beautiful, beautiful clothing, said that, her name actually.
Mr. Mayor, that's five minutes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Anne, your time has expired.
I think you got the point.
Is there anyone else here who would like to address counsel at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, I believe is written petitions and communications. Uh, we receive, uh, written communications through our email address, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Uh, we received a number of them over the course of the last two weeks, uh, and I would entertain a motion to accept those into the record.
So moved?
Moved by Hookstra. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Trethuie. Any discussion? Yes.
Uh, there was one letter that came in and the woman said that she was surprised her letter hadn't, she'd sent it before. And actually, it was included in, uh, a, a list of letters, you know, every letter was included last, the last week. But we did receive it because I remember reading it and I remember reading her kiddos, as she called her, her offspring. And that was also included, but it was perhaps several months ago. I just wanted to let her know, if she's listening, that those, uh, emails had been sent in earlier and they had been read.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I noticed that myself.
Yes.
We let her know, Nikki, from our office, too. She contacted us and we.
Excellent. Perfect. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other discussion from counsel? And I believe we can do a voice vote on this one? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda, I believe, uh, is gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Department of Public Safety Services, Back the Blue Program, Kathy and Wayne Elhart Fund of the Community Foundation of the Holland Zeeland Area, five hundred dollars. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation credited to the appropriate account and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you.
Motion to accept with appreciation.
Moved by Trethuie. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Bird. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next item's, uh, six point two, downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Mr. Van Beek?
I'm gonna do double duty. I'm gonna spray the podium for Assistant City Manager Matt Van Dyken, who I'm sure all of you know, but for the viewing public, does a fantastic job of many other things, managing what we call the downtown group. So he is going to, uh, give you the overview on these next three items and, uh, answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. Uh, so tonight is the first step of what we now have as three steps. It used to be five steps. Uh, thank you, Ron. Uh, for the annual downtown assessments for parking, um, snowmelt and the principal shopping district. Uh, these are separate items on your agenda, uh, but if it's with your pleasure, I would like to address all three at once as they go kind of as a bit of a package, uh, for downtown.
With, without objection, I think you can go ahead and do that.
Great. And Keith, do you have the remote? So we have downtown assessments for this. So the first assessment is the parking and operations and maintenance of our downtown free parking system. Uh, as we all know, downtown free parking is not free. There is a cost to that that is, is paid by the merchants. Uh, the city has a parking board that is, sits kind of under the DDA and our org structure that looks at all, all of what's going on down there. Um, that board has recommended to the DDA and the DDA has approved and recommends to you all a five percent reduction, uh, in the cost of the parking assessment for this year. Uh, the parking fund, as you can see, um, both the parking and the DDA board approve that. Uh, there is a fund balance in there. Uh, we've worked very hard for all those funds over the last, oh, about three or four years. We had a little rocky spot there, uh, about four years ago. And we've worked very hard to build those funds up for, for years like this. So they are recommending that, um, the parking assessment for twenty-twenty-one be reduced by five percent as a way to help those that pay for that downtown parking system get through what is probably a historically bad, uh, season. You know, we have businesses down, down there that, quite frankly, we have businesses that are still closed as of today. And when we think about the theater and, and those type of folks that are still paying this assessment. Now, there's a hundred and fifty-two properties that are hit by the parking assessment, um, but the fund again does have a good fund balance, uh, primarily due to, um, reduced costs for snow removal over the past several mild winters. So that's the parking and operations fund. That's the parking and operations assessment map, so you can see what properties pay as kind of, uh, core and edge properties. And then we have the principal shopping district fund. So principal shopping district, I think most of you know, uh, their office is, again, is in the civic center just as the DDA is. Uh, they put on all of the downtown events, street performers, sidewalk sales, Cinder Claus parade, um, all those different things that we think of that actually haven't been happening this year. That board met, um, and they are recommending a ten percent reduction, uh, in the assessment for the PSD for twenty-twenty-one. Uh, we are, we've had some cost savings because we haven't had some of those events that have occurred. And, um, but we've also had some lost revenue because those events haven't occurred. Um, we're very hopeful and in twenty-twenty-one that will happen. And again, due to the hard work of, of Kara Downtown, uh, they've built that fund balance up significantly and can weather this storm. So, uh, you can see on the slide there's kind of some of what is entailed with that, but really it's, uh, again, an even bigger reduction to that future assessment for those downtown businesses. You can see the rates. I'm sure you're not terribly interested in the difference between a, uh, upper floor or core or edge, lower level, first level difference, but that's the price difference that they're assessed. And then finally, snowmelt. So snowmelt is actually taken care of by staff. Amy Sasamoto does absolutely fantastic job with this. We get a lot of help with the, the finance and assessing departments on these because this is a fairly complicated, um, calculation that comes in. That assessment, the snowmelt operations assessment, goes up three percent every year. It has for as long as we can remember and we need to continue that in the future, but we are recommending not increasing that assessment this year, holding that flat at forty-eight cents per square foot. And again, revisiting that next year when we come and talk to you about that. I wanna just be very clear that all of these changes and the recommendations from the particular boards and bodies are for one time. And we have not, um, discussed even at the PSD or the DDA. I actually am a, a voting member on both of those boards, um, extending this out past that. It's been made very clear to all those folks, uh, that are downtown, that this is a one-time deal to get us through what, what's just a terrible, um, season with COVID. So we're very much, um, hopeful that the city council will agree with the recommendations that are being passed on to you, um, and provide at least some small amount of relief for the people that really pay for this. The people that are recommending that those assessments be reduced for next year are the people that pay those assessments and have helped to build up the fund balances that allow us to, again, weather the storm. We're hopeful that next year, we wanna get back to doing events, right? I wanna see what new events we can do. And that's been kind of my charge since I've taken over with, with Kara is what else can we do? Well, everything that we can do, we can't do right now. So it's, uh, next year is what can we do? How can we do it? Uh, and how can be sa, how can we be safe and really continue to welcome everyone downtown? With that, uh, tonight is the first step. It, uh, schedules the, tonight schedules the public hearing. Uh, the public hearing then would be on September sixteenth, if you approve, uh, with potentially final approval on October the seventh.
Questions for Matt? Yes, Quincy?
Um, have, have, there been conversations beyond, uh, the year twenty-twenty-one? I guess, I, I'm wondering if there's, so the ask is a percentage off or no percentage? And is it look, have you guys discussed doubling that in twenty-twenty-two or just going with the original rate that we currently have or that we have had in the past?
So for the snowmelt, we would go back to the three percent. And then that five percent and the ten percent reductions for those respective assessments would go back to what they currently were in this fiscal year. So they'd go back to what they had been.
So what, what they are right now currently?
Currently. Yes, this is a one-time break and again, we have not discussed going past that. We would have to get some financial analysis done to see if we could actually sustain those. We know we can sustain them for next year, um, but beyond that, that would be a discussion point. Again, I'm hopeful that that's not a discussion that we have to have because things have gotten back to whatever the new normal is in, uh, twenty-twenty-two.
Hopefully it's the old normal.
We're all hopeful, yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions for Matt?
Sounds like you've done your homework and they've done their homework, so.
Yeah, and I wanna be, I wanna make one thing very, very clear. I have not done my homework. Amy, Kara, a finance office, they did their homework. They worked with their respective boards to allow me to have a few seconds to bring a, a recommendation to you. So there's the ones that really deserve the credit, um, for actually not only weathering through this storm, but looking forward to the future.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, Quincy?
Um, I, I appreciate them bringing this to us. I can support this hands down. There, there have been a lot of people who have been adversely affected by COVID-nineteen and whatever we can do to help the community, I'm, I'm one hundred percent for that, so.
Great, thank you.
Supported.
Anyone else? Yeah, I just wanna thank the group as well and, and Quincy, I agree with you completely about that. Um, you know, three, three percent, five percent, ten percent here and there, doesn't seem like a lot, but every little bit does add up. And these groups have not been sitting on their hands during twenty-twenty. PSD has been working very hard to help support downtown businesses and be able to help them adjust, uh, to this, this new different that we have, whether or not, uh, we could, whatever the normal is, we've got a situation that they've been, they've done a great job over the course of the spring and the summer and now into the fall. Um, and we are one of few downtowns that has free parking. Um, I hear from visitors all the time that they're surprised that they come to Holland, they don't have to pay for parking. Um, and that's because our downtown merchants are, are supporting that. Um, and of course, snowmelt. Won't be long. Winter will be back here again. So, um, at this point, we need to do three separate motions, uh, each one to set a public hearing on each one of these items. Uh, looking to have the public hearing on September sixteen, twenty-twenty. Uh, first entertain, entertain a motion in regard to downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment.
Motion to accept the draft, uh, downtown parking operation and maintenance assessment role, adopt a resolution scheduling the public hearing of necessity for Wednesday, the sixteenth, in council chambers and asking the city clerk to, uh, to publish and mail the required notices.
Moved by Trethuie. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra. Any discussion? Seeing none. Voice vote?
Uh, roll call.
Roll call. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Trethuie?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, now entertain a motion in regard to downtown principal shopping district assessment.
Motion to adopt the resolution scheduling a public hearing of necessity, uh, for fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-one PSD assessment for Wednesday, the sixteenth, and also instructing the clerk to publish and mail required notices.
Moved by Trethuie. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnshorst. Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trethuie?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin? Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Peters? Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And last but not least, downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment. Would entertain a motion in regard to that.
Motion to adopt the resolution scheduling the public hearing of necessity for the snowmelt, downtown snowmelt operations assessment role for Wednesday, the sixteenth of September twenty-twenty at six-thirty and again, asking the clerk to publish and mail required notices.
Moved by Trethuie. Is there support?
Support.
Uh, I'm gonna give that one to Bird, I think. Uh, move by Trethuie, support by Bird. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin? Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird? Peters?
Yes.
Trethuie?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, item number thirteen, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
I'm going fast tonight. One, I'll just remind Councilman Trethuie that he probably has something to talk about later as to an event that unfortunately is not happening this weekend. I bet he didn't need that, uh, reminder. And two, kinda trying to remember that we do videos sometimes if our meetings don't go to two o'clock in the morning. So we have that opportunity tonight and Mr. Van Dyken is gonna show a great video about, uh, our public safety department.
Ottawa County nine-one-one?
Yes, uh, there's a gentleman that just fell off of his bike. Uh, he, they planted it in the middle of the road.
We found, uh, Norm, uh, laying in the middle of the street. Kind of tangled his bicycle, so I untangled his bicycle from him and got the bike off the side of the road.
He's on the ground. He is not moving.
Is he, is he awake?
Is he awake?
Oh, he's getting some... Oh, my God.
What's going on?
He's not breathing. Oh, my God, we're doing CPR. You gotta hurry.
All right, we got help on the way. Hold on just a moment.
Tony actually started doing CPR. And we just made sure his airway was clear and they switched on and off doing chest compressions.
Come on, buddy. You okay, Tony? You need me to take over?
Firetruck showed up and paramedics, yeah, then they started doing all their work.
And this event played out like a marathon relink with each person passing to the top along the way.
Hey, there?
Yeah, this is 911. Do you guys have CPR in progress?
He's back breathing. He's back breathing now.
I don't remember going down. The first thing I remember after having an uncomfortable bike ride was hearing that I had had a heart attack and that a stent had been placed in. I talked to three of the doctors after the surgery and all of them said, it's really a miracle because they said the outcome is usually not good when a person has a heart attack outside of a hospital. And it's only really because people stepped in immediately, probably is the reason that I was able to recover and actually the reason that I had as little heart damage as I did.
This is the good outcome. This is what everybody wants. And a family got it. They're not all going to go that way, but it went that way today. That's what we're celebrating. That's what we're recognizing. That's what we're celebrating. People stepped up. They did the right thing and you get a good outcome.
I'm very grateful to them. My family is grateful. One of the thoughts that I had right as I was kind of becoming conscious and realizing what was going on is, Jack, I could be in heaven today. And the other thought was, I'm going to go to my daughter's wedding.
Wow. It's, you know, I think of this sometimes as a bigger city. To see so many faces that I recognized in that video is just amazing, fantastic, fantastic also for the people that did it, but also to be able to capture that and get that out into the public is a wonderful thing as well. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, I saw that online and it's the same effect seeing it again. It just kind of grabs you. Lots of people, all working right in a row.
Is that it?
I'm not going to top that.
All right. Appointments and communications from the mayor. Nothing from me this evening. Item number 15, appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Mr. Trethuie?
I do have two things. And thank you, Mr. Van Beek, for reminding me. I did have it written down, but thank you. This Labor Day is going to be just a little bit different for me. The past nine or 10 years, I've had the pleasure of being part of the Labor Day Community Truck Parade. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we canceled it a couple of months ago. Just a reminder that that will not be going on, but we will still celebrate. And I'm asking people, the citizens of the city of Holland, to remember those as the city manager prayed about or talked about earlier. Those that are working every day, people in the room, making this a thriving community. The entrepreneur spirit that we have here with all the businesses that we have, we love to celebrate it, wish we could have the big trucks out there again making all the noise. But let's remember what this holiday is for. It's for the workers. It's to celebrate those workers. It's to celebrate the community that we have here. So unfortunately, it's done for this year, but next year will be bigger and better, just like everybody else. We're going to have a lot of big events next year, I'm understanding. So that's it on that one. And the second thing, I'm going to eat a little humble pie here. I owe an apology to my fellow council members, to the citizens of Holland, and to especially a gentleman that was here last week. The mayor is very poignant when he says one-way communication from the audience, and that goes for us also during our comments. And I broach that. It was unprofessional and not like me. I got caught up in the spirit of the moment. There was conversation going on about the climate control and a gentleman was shaking his head there and it caught me wrong. And I said something to him and I should not have. So unfortunately, he's not here tonight, so I apologize to him. I apologize to my fellow council members for breaking that security and breaking that trust, especially coming from the CGO. I'd love to say it's never going to happen again. I can't make a promise I can't keep, but we're all human. We try to be as professional as possible up here. We try to hold the utmost. I failed in that last week and for that, I apologize. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for saying that, Mike. You hold us all to a high standard and I appreciate it that you hold yourself to that same high standard. And as CGO, you hold us accountable and I appreciate it that you hold yourself accountable to that as well. So thank you for that. Quincy?
Yes, I wanted to, two things. The video that was shown, that was pretty fascinating to me. Living in the time where we live where there's so much, I guess, when you turn on the TV and you see the news, it's bad news. And to live in a community that is trying to put out good information, good news, things that are not common in today's society. So I really appreciate seeing this. And again, that just reinforces my thought about Holland, how we live in a community that is different than most communities in the United States of America. So I'm glad to live here, really glad to live here. The other thing is, I don't know if you mentioned this any other time, I would expect Mike to mention this, but this year's National Night Out has been canceled. It's been a fun event for me and for my family and for other members in the community. If I'm not mistaken, our city manager was going to be part of the pie eating contest this year. So next year, we'll make sure that happens. Right? Yes?
Apple pie?
Blueberry. So I just wanted to share that with the community that we will not be having a National Night Out this year as so many things, as the truck parade and so many other things have been canceled. That's one of the things that have been canceled this year.
Thank you, Quincy. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to go into a closed-door session to review a legal opinion with the city attorney.
So moved.
Moved by Trethuie. Is there support? Support by Byrd. Any discussion? And I believe it's a roll call vote. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin? Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters? Trethuie?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We will now be adjourning into a closed-door session, so that means that we're going to ask all of the members of the audience to please leave city council chambers. And we will be returning after the closed-door session, but we will not be conducting any business at that time. We will simply be going back into open session in order to adjourn the meeting. So thank you all and we appreciate you being here, but we need to move into closed session.
And same thing for the viewing public, so we'll take a little bit of a break for that.
Yes, and viewing public as well. We will not be coming back viewing public.